Good evening, I'd like to call the order of the Thousand Oaks City Council meeting for Tuesday, February 25th, 2014. If you'd all please rise and join me in saluting our flag. Ms. Lawrence, could you call the roll for tonight's meeting, please?
Councilmember Bill De La Peña?
Present.
Councilmember Irwin?
Here.
Councilmember Price is absent. Mayor Protim Adam?
Here.
Mayor Fox?
Here.
Item four is a request for any continuance of any public hearing item or agenda item. Is there any issues council wants to bring to the desk? Our hearing, none. Move to item five, that's special presentations. Tonight, we have a special presentation. I'd like to invite Siobhan Hill, the Alliance for the Arts Director, to the podium. Siobhan has information to convey about the Alliance for the Arts activities with the council and our residents. Good evening.
Good evening, Councilmember and Mayor, of course. Of course, thanks to Barry for helping me out tonight. We have a presentation here on our slideshow that will walk you through. First and foremost, I can't believe it's been six months since I started the new job, so today was a great day, opportunity to kind of update you on where we're at. We have two new members, which is Sheena Powell, who's our newest Director of Membership, and also Erin McCoy, who's our new assistant to myself. She basically keeps me in line, make sure I get to work and get out in the field every single day. Our next slide also talks about our fiscal year and how we've started so far. We started the year off in November with a gala, which was here in this site, which was an incredible event for us. Anytime you put Rita on a stage, you can't stop laughing. A great night to really encourage and inspire that endorphin inside of us that makes us laugh and smile and remember what makes us great as a city and as a plaza here. So it was a great evening. We continue on to our philanthropist of the year, which is Harry Sullivan. As you know, he has been the hugest advocate for this mural project. And guess what happened in January 1st? He got his wish to come true. Our first donor was Shirley Ford, and we're honored Shirley is because she's a volunteer here at the theater. So she's been a long volunteer, has been here from San Fernando Valley coming out every week to volunteer, so it was great. Our artist was Wendy Jan's, third floor by the elevator, and of course, it's the beautiful oak tree, so we couldn't think of a better place for that to be placed. Our new, next artist is Denise. She is the master's. It's on the third, it's on the fourth level, right outside you, outside of the elevator. So again, setting great tones for people when they enter into the Civics Arts Plaza and understanding there's a bigger picture what we're with. We are really excited also that in January, had an opportunity to hand over the checks, which were within partnership with the Cultural Affairs Commission in the performance grants. There were 97,000 people, $1,000 that was given this year. What I loved about the performance that happened was the opportunity to hear their story and how important it was for them to receive this grant and why the value of it continued on, so we were appreciative of it. This one's close to my heart, I'll be honest with you, and I want to personally thank Claudia for opening that door for me in the beginning when I had a, had a dream and had a hope because of that match you lit. I'm telling you, this place has caught on fire with the school district, obviously, our superintendent, and thanks to our mayor, and here at the Civics Arts Plaza, we have partnered up together to write a grant. Basically, this grant is given to us by the Kennedy Center. It's an opportunity to apply as a city. It's an opportunity for us to make sure people understand that 20 years ago, when it was important for the people to have the Civics Arts Plaza, that we are still looking at the next generation of students in grades K through eight. So what this study is, is it's about nine cities last year applied for it, only three get it per year. If we are the recipients, we will actually have the title of one of those, continue to show everyone what a premier city is. When you go to the Kennedy Center and you touch their wall, for their video wall there, it will come and will remind people the importance that the City of Thousand Oaks has placed on the continued education of the arts here in the Caneo Valley School District, and I am honored to be part of that project. It's membership time, which is really important to the Thousand Oaks Civics Arts Plaza. Membership is what drives us financially. It allows us an opportunity to continue to generate funds. We have over 20 years of membership of great names and people, but we really want to make sure we brought it to the next level. First, we haven't had new founders in seven years. We're honored to have two new founders, which is the Shankar family, who own a business locally, engineering family, and also their daughter and son-in-law, who are local doctors here, so we're really honored that they're here. And also Premier America stepped up and said that this was important to them, so there are two of our new founders that have joined in. Founders is what based us, but we want to make sure we're attracting all individuals here locally in the city and also at a larger scale. We launched our new website, and in the website, up on the right-hand corner, there's a new tab that says "Log In," so we want you to log in because we want you to see what's going on inside these beautiful walls here at Thousand Oaks Civics Arts Plaza. Just this last week, we have launched the inside, so what you get is the basic scoop. So the moment you become the member, you get the latest and the hottest news. And what that does is gives you an opportunity to actively engage and to be able to be part of a bigger community here. It's an opportunity for people to connect network-wise, opportunity for people to register for different events, just it gives us a whole new platform and builds a whole new relationship with that younger families that have children and really don't know where their relationship is with membership, but giving them some new outlets. And the most important thing is that membership is affordable. We're really honored to know the lowest levels, entry level's $50, and it goes up from there. It's key and important that we know and recognize that there is an opportunity for everyone to get involved, and this is a great gift that you give to the Alliance that passes it on to Civics Arts Plaza, so we can ensure our continued success. I think the neatest thing that we've done in the last six months is we've kicked off the membership lounge. The membership lounge has been, for this first year that we've done it, is for the resident companies. It's an opportunity for us to open the founder's room, dress it up, put some theme behind it. For example, Forever Plaid was our first one. Cabrillo Family presented music. We had the actors come up and talk to the people. The two general themes came out of it. One, most importantly, is "Thank You." I really appreciate you doing this. I really do. It's an opportunity for us to gather people together as a community before, to get here earlier, to enjoy our snacks and our wonderful things that we have to offer, but most importantly, to start talking to one another and looking forward to seeing each other at the next resident company or next show that they have, so that that membership would continue to grow. All right, "The Million Child," it's official. I think I've sweated and worried about this over and over as we've watched the numbers every single month on when it was going to hit. We are honored to be able to show Charlotte's Web. On March 6th, within collaboration with the city, the million child that has been bussed in will walk through these doors. So on behalf of us, we could not think of a better show to show it. I can't be more excited than that, but at the same time, what a great tribute to all the men and women that have unsacrificedly given and continue to support the Kids in the Arts program. The Alliance, can you believe the angels are 15 years of these wonderful table decorating contests that they do, and it's been a true tradition here in Thousand Oaks. This year, it will be on April 30th at the Country Club here at North Ranch, and it'll be another great way to re-insure what we've done for so many years. 100% of their funding goes to continuing to support the Kids in the Arts. Of course, the golf tournament is traditionally with us too, May 5th. I'm really happy that we're going to be honoring Patricia and George Jones. They have done some incredible work over the last 15 years, just here with us as an organization. His sacrifice, George, of leading this golf tournament for so many years, and obviously, Patricia in this position, it's a lot, and so it gives us a chance to be able to recognize them as a husband and wife team. You know I'm Irish, and I told you six months ago I couldn't wait till your birthday party, and believe it or not, we're having it on October 25th. I couldn't think of the better way to shout it out on top of a rooftop, and that's what I said the first time. So I thought about it and thought about it and thought about it. I wanted to make sure everybody knew. So we're taking the top of your parking structure, and we are turning it into the biggest and the best party we've ever thrown as a city. I'm super excited to be part of that and knowing that we'll be able to make, continue to make a mark with the beautiful improvements that you've allowed for the front of the lobby, with the continued membership and the good vibe, and making people surely aware of what we're doing as an organization to continue to keep the arts alive. So finally, I just remind everybody, become a member, because every dollar of that goes towards us to continuing being a successful Civics Arts Plaza. Any questions you might have?
Any question for Siobhan? Lot of energy, nice job.
Thank you so much.
Next, I'd like to invite Ryan Gallagher from the American Public Works Association to the podium. Ryan has excellent news regarding awards that the City of Thousand Oaks has received.
Good evening. Thanks for having me, I appreciate, I won't have such a colorful and fun presentation, that was really good, I was impressed. I hope I'm invited to the city's birthday party, but as you said, my name's Ryan Gallagher. I am the President for American Public Works Association this year for the Ventura County Chapter. I also work for a local engineering company, AE Comm. APWA, if you are not familiar with what our organization does, our main focus is to promote public works, to provide educational opportunities for our members, and to recognize achievements within public works. Our membership includes 250 members in Ventura County, which covers all of the major agencies, consultants, and special districts, so we have quite a, quite a wide following, and some would say the best, public works-focused organization in Ventura County. That was a joke. That's, that was the joke. So, sorry, so each year, each year, our organization, as I mentioned, we'd like to recognize excellence within public works, and so we offer six awards, six categories I should say, and those include five Project of the Year and one Professional of the Year. So this year, I'd like to congratulate the City of Thousand Oaks, because you guys picked up three of those six, and like I said, this is countywide, includes dozens of projects, applications, Professional of the Year, and Project of the Year. So we had a lot to choose from, and we selected three from the City of Thousand Oaks. So I just wanted to recognize, the first one is Professional of the Year. That's Chuck Rogers. Our nominating committee was very impressed by Chuck's, the fact that he has a nationally-recognized facility. We see it all the time, and for having such a small treatment plant, in the scheme of things, it's impressive at how well-recognized it is nationally. The other one is his focus on innovation and sustainability. Probably that's the reason that leads to its national recognition, but it is very impressive, and it often sets a standard for other agencies to follow. And the last is, every person that visits that treatment plant, I know personally, always says it's the cleanest treatment plant they have ever been to, and these are people that go traveling around the nation and often the world, so I think that's an impressive feat to have accomplished, and with that, I'd like to recognize Chuck Rogers. So we have a nice plaque for you, Chuck.
Thank you, Ryan.
Yes. Can do with it whatever you want.
All right. Thank you very much.
Congratulations. And I'll be brief on the last two. These were both Project of the Year, and like I said, there's different categories, so one of them was Wendy Drive, and that was in the transportation category, and then the second was the Michael Drive Park Restoration, which was in the environment category. And I'm not sure if Jay or someone wants to recognize the team members for that, but I just want to say that as APWA, we were very impressed at both the projects. I think it demonstrates great project manage, management, great leadership within public works, and then I think it has to end with you guys, the city council, in creating the opportunity and the environment for such success to occur. So, with that, Michael Drive? And then this is for the Wendy Drive? Congratulations.
And just, just briefly, Mr. Mayor, it's a, it's a privilege to be the Director of an organization such as we have here, our Public Works Department in Thousand Oaks, and I would like to recognize the staff that worked on those two projects. Mike De Hidian was actually Project Manager on the engineering side for both of them, and Tom Pisa also worked on the construction phase on both projects. Elaine Camilla also assisted on those. So to all of our staff, and especially these team members, I give them my thanks as well for the, and thank you, APWA, for the recognition.
Ryan, did the council hear you correctly that people actually get paid to travel around the world and visit wastewater treatment plants?
They're usually fixing problems, but yes.
Oh, okay. All right, that concludes our special presentations. Congratulations again to the Public Works Department, and we'll now move to item six, that's public comment. Mayor and Clerk, could you call public comment, please?
This is the time and place for public comments. A speaker card is available for those wishing to address the city council regarding items on the agenda or on a subject within the city's jurisdiction. All remarks should be addressed to the council as a whole, and all documents for city council and the official records should be presented to the city clerk prior to speaking. Speakers are requested to state their name and community of residence for the record. Under state law, public comment matters may not be considered by the council unless listed on the agenda, but may be referred to the city manager for administrative follow-up. Six, excuse me, four people have presented cards, and pursuant to council standards, speakers are allowed three minutes. The yellow light displays when you have one minute remaining.
Thank you, Ms. Lawrence. Linda, make sure we have that timer set. Our first speaker is city manager Scott Minnick. Good evening, Mr. Minnick.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, remember you work for the city manager. You heard some comments about a-
Oh, sorry. I got a cue from the mayor.
You two work for, or used to work for the city manager. We just heard some comments about a premier public works department, so now we'll have some comments about a premier police department. So I'll make some comments about our outgoing police chief and then our incoming police chief. So, so city council, all of you attended on Friday night, the retirement dinner for outgoing police chief Randy Pentis. It was a very nice event, lots of accolades and so on, and he's been busy getting awards to sort of outdo the public works department, but a lot of recognition within the department. This morning, he was recognized by the board of supervisors. That was followed by recognition by our executive team this morning, and so here we are. Thousand Oaks should get the last word to recognize an individual for a, a career well-done. So Chief Randy Pentis spent 32 years with the Ventura County Fire, or Fire, sorry, Police Department. And so, he's had a profound effect on us. The bottom line, he did a great job in the variety of positions. He worked in the police department here for a number of years, and most recently as a police captain, which is the assistant police chief, and in the last couple of years as police chief. And it's only fitting, in his last year, Thousand Oaks received top marks with the FBI crime statistics. We are the number-fourth safest city in America, cities over 100,000 in terms of FBI statistics, and the safest city in California, population over 100,000. And Chief Pentis has reminded us over and over that happened on his watch, so it's only fitting he gets to leave with those numbers. At the end of the day, I'll put all the accolades aside, at the end of the day, he did a great job for the community. He did a great job with the school district in particular, that's been his passion to deal with the youth of the commission, I mean, the youth of the community, both in the public and private schools. And if you, you heard from Superintendent Jeffrey Barsted at the retirement dinner, and he had some comments on that. He's touched a lot of families in this community. So I'll let him come up and say a few words, but we can come up, Randy? I will say this, he made the council, the executive team, and the city organization better. For that, we're gonna, we're gonna miss you, Randy. And one last final accolade, Randy, you will get an Adopt an Oak Tree Program recognition. You get this cool certificate, and then your name will go out on the wall and the walkway out there. So that'll be there forever, and that's from your friends here at the City of Thousand Oaks. So here's this, and you did leave this book this morning, Inside Joke, so we'll make sure you have that. And here's this, and feel free to say a few words.
Want to give this to the fire chief?
It has your name on the inside, but thanks for everything you've done, and we will be missed.
Appreciate it.
You know, Randy, just before, I'm gonna give you the last word, but we had, on behalf of the council, all of us were at your retirement dinner for the viewing public. I've been to many retirement dinners over my 33 years in the fire department and in public service, and this was one of the, without a doubt, one of the most well-attended retirement celebrations that I've personally ever had the opportunity to attend, well over 300 people. Lot of comments about Chief Pentis, and I just want the public to know that above and beyond all the great management and executive leadership and public safety issues, this is a gentleman who cares a lot about people, and that's probably why he chose the profession that he chose. And I can just tell you that if you could pick anybody you'd want to live next door to, and you'd want your son or your daughter to be mentored by, it's Randy Pentis. So Randy, on behalf of all of us, congratulations on a great career. We wish you and the family the very best in retirement. Thank you so much for your service.
Well, Mayor, council, as you know, I'm not at a loss for, for words often, but listening to you, Mayor Fox, I'm speechless, and I'm humbled, and I'm very thankful, and with great respect and with great love for the council and especially the nearly 130,000 residents that we serve. I've reflected, working a patrol car in 1985 in Newbury Park, from our old station on Olson Road, to opening the new station, and retiring as your chief is quite an honor. So I'm very, very thankful.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, some big shoes to be, to be filled there, and I think we're gonna be successful with that goal. So next, I'd like to introduce to the council and to the community, your next police chief, and that would be Tim Hagel. And Tim will come up and say a few words, but just a little bit about his background. 27 years with the Sheriff's Department, raised in the City of Thousand Oaks, so this is a homecoming for him to come back here, and he'll say a few words to you, but it was a tough selection process, let me tell you that, and Tim Hagel surfaced as the number-one top candidate. So Mr. Hagel, you want to come up?
Thank you, Mr. Minnick. Mayor Fox and the council, first of all, I want to thank you. It's, it's an emotional night, it's a humble night for me. I think, I was thinking tonight when I was driving here, all the memories we have in our life, and who can think of a name of their teacher, all the way back when you're a kid, when you're at my age? And mine came out, Mr. Dorfler, Mr. Washburn, Mr. Fox, Mrs. Coombs, Mrs. Roman, Mr. Reese, Mr. Luft, Mr. McDermott, Mr. Porter, and the list is just going on and on and on, from Acacia School to Redwood Elementary, or Middle School to Thousand Oaks High School. And these were people, some of them are gone now, but these were people that influenced a little snotty kid from Drexel Circle at Dover and Hendricks. And I still remember, as I fast-forward through those days in Thousand Oaks, when the sheep, you know, were behind our backyard there at Caneo Park, going up Moore Park Road, and the old Thousand Oaks police officer that used to chase me when I was on my minibike, going, going around the area right there, and, and think to myself, honestly, how humbled I am to be here right now, take the torch from Chief Pentis, who has carried this city with that same community spirit. Everybody I'm bumping into now for the last two weeks around town, that's all they talk about, is Randy Pentis. He came to my school, he knows my kids, he helped my kids. It's that same sense of community that I will take as a challenge to be a steward of. I look, I was thinking here today, it's kind of funny that the fire chief standing behind me here was in kindergarten with me. And so you would think we have a little conspiracy going on here for homegrown, Randy went to the other premier high school, but I was able to go to Thousand Oaks High School. I really, it's been a long journey. I started out as a park ranger, as you know, in Wildwood Park, and worked as a Koska Ranger. Spent two summers with a trail crew, building the Los Robles Trail with five of us, which was a great, great assignment. And it was, it was all of that combined, working for the park district that shaped me, going away to school, going up to Humboldt, and back to Northridge, and, and working on my higher education, that just keeps bringing me back, my family's here, shop here, got my lovely wife for 25 years, right there, thank you, Tammy. And so, so I just really want to thank you for, for this ability to be able to serve the city, and I still remember, for Chief Pentis, when I was a brand-new officer on the street, 27 years ago, I was over in Newbury Park, and I was in a foot pursuit, chasing a burglar. I didn't really know many people in the area, I was a brand-new officer, it was daytime, and all of a sudden, if anybody remembers Startsky and Hutch, all of a sudden, this Trans Am, was it? A Trans Am, a blue Trans Am, came screeching up sideways, I didn't know who it was, and out came this guy, Chief Pentis, who was a gang officer on the street undercover, helps me subdue the burglar, and as we're handcuffing him on the ground, I'd never really seen him before, and he's got hair like out to here, and as we're handcuffing him, he's already talking away to me, saying, "So how are you? Who are you? Hi, I'm Randy. How are you?" And I'm out of breath, and it's that same spirit that Chief Pentis has carried to today, all the way along today, that same spirit of keeping the community safe, and I continue to carry that on for you.
Chief, just to let you know, one of the many skills that Mr. Minnick have is he picks outstanding members of his executive team. In fact, I would say that's probably one of Scott's strongest skill sets, and so there's no doubt that he picked the right person for the job. We're very excited about your new assignment, we look forward to working with you for years to come. Congratulations to you and your family. All right, that concludes Mr. Minnick's presentation. Again, congratulations to both gentlemen. Our next speaker is Adam Haverstock. Following Mr. Haverstock will be Katie Beck. Good evening, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, councilmembers and staff. Before I begin my report from the Chamber of Commerce, I did want to say congratulations to Chief Pentis on his, as he leaves, 30 years of service. Thank you very much. You have many friends in the business community, the Chamber of Commerce, and thank you very much for your service, on behalf of the chamber. My name is Adam Haverstock, I'm the Manager of Government and Economic Affairs for the Greater Caneo Valley Chamber of Commerce, and we represent business to government on behalf of the 1,100-plus members that we have, businesses in Thousand Oaks, Westlake Village, and Agora Hills. And I came tonight to give you a quick update on a few items. The first is that the Chamber of Commerce is having their annual awards gala this Friday, February 28th. It's going to be at the Four Seasons Hotel over in Westlake. I hope you've all bought your tickets, because we are sold out, you're not able to buy them anymore, but we'd love to have you at the event on Friday night if you did buy tickets. It is Wizard of Oz-themed. For those of you that don't know, this is our 75th anniversary. I know the city is celebrating its 50th anniversary, the chamber is turning 75. It's also the year that the Wizard of Oz came out, so it is a Wizard of Oz-themed gala. It's going to be a lot of fun, the stage is going to be decorated like the Emerald City, and the emcee is going to be the wizard, so it should be a lot of fun. I wanted to mention that the chamber is proud to be involved in the Amgen Tour of California coming up on May 18th. We're very happy to work with Drew Powers, who is the Chair of the Local Organizing Committee, as well as all the staff involved, specifically our role to reach out to the businesses in the community, to reduce the impact on them, and to make sure they're well-informed about the race. And then additionally, we've also used our involvement with the Tourism Improvement District to help place all of the people that are producing and racing in the Tour of California in hotels locally, so we're very happy to do that on behalf of the race. And, you know, I also wanted to report that the hotels in the area have said that in addition to the people we have directed to them that are producers and racers in the race, they've had many bookings in addition to that, and they expect to be booked out that entire weekend, so it'll be a wonderful TOT tax weekend for us, and sales tax, of course. Speaking of the Tourism Improvement District, the TID has selected Augustine Ideas as our destination marketing agency. We did that at the beginning of the year. They're out of Roseville, California, they have many prestigious clients that are other TIDs as well, we think they're going to do a great job for us. And they're currently working on branding for us, they're working on a website, something in the flavor of Discover Caneo or Visit Caneo, something like that, to talk about why people should come here, and we hope to have that released before the Tour of California, so those folks that are coming to Thousand Oaks for the tour will be able to hopefully visit other attractions we have here in the Caneo Valley. And then finally, I wanted to let you know that the Caneo View Magazine is currently in production. For those of you that aren't aware, about a year ago, we switched from a newspaper format over to a magazine format that we release quarterly at the Chamber of Commerce. It's in production right now, it should be hitting the drop-off areas and going in the mail in the next week or so. And- And that's all the time I have, unless there are any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Adam. Katie Beck, from the YMCA, and our last speaker would be Echbal Kidway.
Good evening. I'm here tonight on behalf of both the Cano Valley YMCA and the Miller Family YMCA in Newberry Park, to talk to you about our new initiative that we're rolling out here at the end of March called Activate Cano Valley. Activate Cano Valley is a month-long, free, healthy-living program for all the residents of Thousand Oaks, Newberry Park, and the city surrounding, and the Cano Valley. And our goal is to support and encourage our residents to exercise more and make healthy choices. Throughout the month of, the end of March, and throughout the month of April, we'll be offering a month-long worth of walking groups, both in Newberry Park and in Thousand Oaks, and we'll be supporting our residents with a weekly nutrition newsletter, and some health talks from local health professionals. Tonight, I especially wanted to thank and express my appreciation to the City Council for participating with the Y in this program as part of their 50th anniversary celebration. It is also the 50th anniversary of the Southeast Ventura County YMCA that started with the Cano Valley YMCA up on Olson and Moore Park, so we are excited to be working on this. The city staff and the 50th Anniversary Committee has been amazing to work with, so supportive, and they're definitely an essential piece to making this initiative a great success. I also wanted to invite the Council to join us at the kickoff event, which is a Health and Fitness Expo on March 22nd, from 9:00 to 1:00, and we will actually be out here on the lawn at City Hall. We're going to have vendors representing all types of health and wellness, and well as exercise opportunities, and just ways for people to get moving and learn more, and then we'll launch into that month-long event with the walking groups and the nutrition newsletter. All of the schedule will be posted on our website, which is S-E-V-Y-M-C-A.org, and the Council members will also provided with a very fancy, colorful flyer that gives you all that information as well. And I think that's all I have to announce tonight, we're just looking forward to a really great event, and getting our community healthier, and making great, healthy choices. So unless there's any other questions, thank you.
Thank you, Katie. Our last speaker is Echbal Kidway. Mr. Kidway, welcome back.
Good evening, Mayor. I begin in the name of God, who is most beneficial, most merciful. My name is Nick Echbal Kidway, I'm a resident of Newberry Parks since '79, and it's great to hear about the local stories and the local boys here that went to school. I was in El Cajon, no, I was in La Jolla for a week, and I've been hearing about El Cajon all day on KNX, that, and this is the kind of thing that some of us tried to escape, was that the DMV in El Cajon has been selling licenses from $500 to $2,500. So unfortunately, corruption has creeped into our society too, and this city has something to hide or something, I mean, they're not, it's not very welcoming, even though the mayor is, says nice things, but there's something fishy going on, which we have said for a long time. We have not been able to prove it. I was in El Cajon, in Irvine even, and one of the things that I noticed was that the clutter in our city has become so bad, and there were stories in the paper that the banners or the sidewalk signs would be removed, and nothing has happened. I mean, it's just PR stuff in the paper. There's a Dos Vinos Amigos restaurant, just if you make a left turn from here on T.O. Boulevard, that has a huge banner construction going on, it's been there for six months. I mean, the people, staff members, I mean, unless there's a complaint, nothing will be done. I've complained about Hooters, which is a trashy outfit, which has trashed Giant's Mall by putting H-O-O-T-R-S in huge letters in the windows, and I've been told, well, they're obeying all the rules. They're obeying the rules, how about changing the rules and protecting our city, and keeping it clean, and making it a premier city like El Cajon, like Irvine? On a lighter note, talking about sheep, I mean, the politicians say about sheeple, that the people don't, are not involved in politics or take action, but in the 70s, late 70s, next to my home, we had open space, and, which was, should have been, and a bad decision was made, should have been a movie studio owned by GM, which is S&amp;S Homes, and sheep used to graze there. And I used to go and, I pet the sheep, and twice, there was a cowboy, not on a horse, but on a big pickup truck, and he came, "Get out of here, what the heck are you doing? Don't touch them." And so I learned my lesson, I did it a second time, but I didn't do it a third time, but those days are gone, and I had friends that used to visit me in the 80s, they came a couple of months ago after 30 years, and in fact, commendation, they loved the city, they said, "A lot of growth has been done, but still very nice, you're lucky to live here." So I thank you, have a good day.
Thank you, Mr. Kidway. That concludes our public comment section for tonight's council meeting. We're going to move to Item 7, which is the Consent Calendar. Any items that the Council would like called special for Consent Calendar? All right, hearing none, how about a motion? Mr. Adam.
Mayor, we do have a call.
Thank you. My apologies, Mr. Kidway.
Back again after a long wait, Nick Kidway is in from Newberry Park. Want to talk about the minutes, especially since the February 11th meeting was supposed to be about the 50-year anniversary, and things like that. I mean, I don't know how, you won't be here, but your heirs, how they will be able to face the people 35, 40 years from now, when they look at the minutes, there's a list of people who spoke, but I don't know if there will be videos there or something like that, but they won't be able to read what was said in the comment section. Number D is money for energy services, and the thing that I underlined is offset by grant revenue, and that's what drives this Chamber, is free money. In fact, one of the things that I just recently found out, if you look at your Edison bill, there's a franchise fee. Guess who's paying, who's taking the franchise? Papa Mitnick and my friend, Andy Fox. 1% of your electric bill goes to the city to maintain the infrastructure, I don't know what it is. In fact, staff has told me, not about the electricity, that's what Edison told me, I called up Edison to find out, and the Edison rep told me that that's what the franchise fee is for, so, you know, I think that they are educated enough. But staff has told me about franchise fee for cable, stuff like that, there's no rule that the money, there should be a nexus as to the money being collected for electricity or for cable, that it should only be used, it can be used for anything, it goes into the general fund, and supports the high perks and salaries of our wonderful top staff. I feel sorry for the lower staff, because they don't make a whole lot of money. And you're buying hybrids from an out-of-town place, yet you spend, in my calculation, about $100,000, there was a Chamber rep over here in a buy-local campaign, which is just a bogus campaign, all the cities do it, it's a complete waste of money and time to ask people to buy locals, so that the taxes would be kept over here. People will buy in their local, local self-interest, economic interest, and sometimes they will buy locally, because it just makes sense to buy local, from the neighborhood. I was, I had to buy some things in La Jolla, I did not buy them, because if I had any problems, I was not going to go to La Jolla again for maybe, I don't know, a year. And the last is G, window and solar panel cleaning, 30 seconds left. Promises were made, not a word sorry has ever been said, that the theaters would not be subsidized by the city. At first, I looked at it, I said, "Why is the solar panel and windows together?" But you look at the page right there, Cavalier Theater Cleaning is coming out from the same fund. Which, I mean, this has been going all the time, is the general fund is subsidizing the theater in more ways than we can count. It's ridiculous, it's about time that the city came up and said that, "We are sorry, we cannot maintain this without subsidy, and we are sorry to the citizens, we told you a lie."
Thank you, Mr. Kidway. Mr. Adam, item seven, the Consent Calendar.
I will move the Consent Calendar, if I may, though, just a quick comment about the vehicles that the city's buying. I am completely in favor of buying locally, I support the preference that the city gives for local bids, but unfortunately, there weren't any vendors that sold this kind of vehicle, so we had to go out of town. But I will move the Consent Calendar.
All right, Mr. Adam moves a Consent Calendar discussion on the motion. Hearing none, vote please.
The motion carries 4-0 with Councilmember Price absent.
All right, that is approved. Item 8 is that we have no public hearing scheduled for tonight, that moves us to Item 9, that's Department Reports. Item 9A is a request to allow concurrent processing for property, and that will be Staff Member Claudia Petrosa.
Good evening, Major, and Councilmembers. The request for you right now is going to be for the concurrent processing of a zone change that has been filed in conjunction with the entitlement applications for the construction of a 45-unit apartment complex. If you bear with me just a second, I'm going to load up the map. Just wanted to show you the aerial of the... Okay. The property is located on Los Feliz Drive, and that is two parcels, 1815 Los Feliz Drive and 1825, and basically about a third of the property combined is about, is about R... Sorry, let me restate that. About, the 1815 property is Zone R1, and on the bigger parcel, about a third of that parcel is Zone R1, and the rest of it is Zone RPD 30. The RPD 30 is a high-density, and suitable for the general plan designation of the land, and the zone change is requesting to change that portion of the bigger property plus the smaller property to RPD 30 as well. And this will allow for the construction of the 45 apartment unit complex. And the request for the concurrent processing will allow the Planning Commission and Council to review the zone changes, along with the other applications that will be required, like the RPD application, personal waiver, and Oak Tree permit, and it would allow for Council and Commission to evaluate all the issues together at the same time. The municipal code does require that such requests for concurrent processing are approved by City Council, and therefore, we have this request in front of you. In this particular case, we believe that concurrent processing will be advisable, and it will be beneficial for the project, to review the whole project together, and in the past, City Council has typically approved such requests, and we recommend that concurrent processing is approved for this project as well. And we are available for questions, if you have any.
All right, thank you, Ms. Petrosa. Just by way of process, this is coming to the Council, this would then be referred to staff, and ultimately, is scheduled for a Planning Commission hearing, and it would get a full hearing at the Planning Commission, is that correct?
That is correct, and everything will be reviewed by the Planning Commission and referred back to the Council. If the concurrent processing is not approved, then they will have to go to the zone change first, see if that's approved, and if it's approved, then they can come back with the applications.
All right, very good. Questions for staff? Ms. Bill de la Pena.
Thank you. Also, just for clarification, should the Council approve this tonight, the concurrent processing? That doesn't necessarily mean that we are in favor of up-zoning this, and in favor of this 45-unit apartment project, correct?
That is correct. The only item that the Council is considering now is actually have the concurrent processing, but you're not approving...
Given that, the, given recent developments in that particular neighborhood, I would assume that residents may be a little bit more sensitive to any new developments coming in. Have you notified the developer that it, that he or she or they, if they want to do anything, they got to work with the neighbors?
Yes, they are aware, and as soon as the applications are submitted, if the concurrent processing is approved, they're planning to have community meetings ahead of time.
Okay, all right, because I certainly don't want to have another controversial project, not that we're afraid to make the decisions, but it always helps when issues are ironed out before they come before the Planning Commission or the Council. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Mr. Adam.
Yeah, I think Councilmember de la Pena makes a good point, there are infill projects can be contentious, and it's always good for the developer to work with the neighbors ahead of time, before it gets up to us. My quick question is, as this wends its way through the process, through staff, through Planning Commission, via the City Council, will Measure E come into play? You know, Measure E for the audience, it was an initiative passed back in 1996 by popular vote, that says, constrains the city from becoming any more dense than it was commercially or residentially back in 1996. And so we're always conscious of this measure as we, as we try to grow internally, will, because we're doing a zone change here, will Measure E come into play?
No, because the general plan designation for these properties is already high-density.
Hmm, oh, so the general plan trumps the zone change then?
Is, well, yeah.
All right.
Yeah.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
All right, we do have one card only for questions only, Mr. Adams, I'm sure you heard the sentiment of the Council, let me just echo the fact that while we're not, we have no problem making difficult decisions, what we don't like to see is people come in and they didn't hear anything about the project, so the more community outreach, the better, so. All right, what's the pleasure of the Council? We have no Speaker cards on this side. I take that back. Mr. Kidway.
Nick Kidway, Director Concern, City of Thousand Oaks, Honorable Mayor, City Council. I'm just surprised at the residents in this city, there was so much hullabaloo and ruckus made about the Mini Mansion Project just half a mile, or, I don't know, five blocks from here. I would like to draw the attention of the Council that it was spurred without a hearing, it was, from what I have read, I don't know, done at the behest of the city manager, and the real bottom line is that it costs the taxpayers over $200, quarter million dollars. And that's one of the hidden things over here, which is not said, is the fees are just horrendous in this city for these kind of things, and they should really be reduced or completely eliminated, in my humble opinion, to help the people who are needy, and to meet our goals of low-income housing. The other thing I would like to also mention is that there's people, I mean, don't come to these hearings, but at least we have some kind of a free press, that you are increasing the density and adding to the homes, and taking away lanes unnecessarily, because we have a Public Works Director, I guess, that is a biker, and taking away lanes from taxpayers, who are the majority of the people who drive all the time, and still making these horrendous changes over here, which do not help the majority of the people, and contribute to deadlock and lowering our quality of life. Remembering quality of life, I am reminded of my friend, Eloezina, who mentioned that Measure E was measured exception, and I guess I will be six feet under the ground before something comes up that meets the standard of Measure E. Yes, Mr. Fox, the author of Measure E, the great champion of slow growth, right? Congratulations, have a good day.
Thank you, Mr. Kidway. All right, what's the pleasure of the Council? That concludes our Speaker cards. Mr. Adam.
Sir, I would like to move 9A for concurrent processing.
All right, Mr. Adam moves 9A, discussion on that. Hearing none, vote please.
Motion carries 4-0, Councilmember Price absent.
That item is approved. We're going to move to Item 9B, that's a Councilmember Compensation, and that will be our Human Resources Director, Mr. Rogers. Good evening, Mr. Rogers.
Good evening, Mayor Fox.
Need to turn your mic on.
Good evening, Mayor Fox.
Much better.
Mayor Fox, members of the City Council, periodically you consider adjustments in your compensation, that typically occurs every two years prior to an election. The state government code sets forth the parameters for any salary adjustment, which for a city of our population, is up to five, up to a 5% increase in salary per year. Adjustments may also be made for previous years in which no adjustments were made. Last time the City Council compensation was adjusted was in 2008.
Last time the city council compensation was adjusted was in 2008. Based on six years without an adjustment, the council has the ability to adjust salary anywhere from 0 to 30%. Should the city council wish to make any changes to council member compensation, the earliest the change can become effective is December of 2014, following the municipal election in November. Any specific changes in compensation need to be incorporated into an ordinance which is attached to the staff report. The council may also wish to consider changes to pension contributions pursuant to state statutes. Classic employees, that is, employees who were hired prior to January 1, 2013, are required to contribute 7% of their salary to their CalPERS pension program. Currently, the city pays on behalf of the city council their required 7% employee PERS contribution. As you know, as part of our recently adopted labor contracts, all non-elected city employees will be paying their full 7% employee retirement contribution effective July 5 of 2014. These were changes that you made and that were made to be consistent with the Public Employee Pension Reform Act, which was adopted by the state legislature in 2012. If the city council wishes to make any changes to the amount the city pays toward your required 7% employee contribution, then there are two resolutions attached to the staff report that would need to be considered. The first would be a resolution which would change the city percentage toward the employee's 7% PERS contribution. And the second is one that we would recommend you also consider, which would make any payments that you would be making on your own behalf pre-tax. The Internal Revenue Code has a section which allows those contributions to be pre-tax. So staff is available to answer any questions you have with respect to council compensation adjustments.
Thank you, Mr. Rogers. Questions for council? Got two speaker cards. Mr. Adams.
Thank you, Mayor Fox. Yes, in the latest contract with the non-elected employees, we have required them to pay the 7% contribution towards their pension that prior to this, the city had been paying. And we allowed them to spread this over a two-year period, 3.5% each year, starting this year. So it's a 3.5% in 2014, and then it goes to the full 7% in 2015. Got that right so far?
Actually, employees started contributing 3.5% on July 6 of 2013.
Ah, okay.
And then in July of this year, the employees will be paying the full 7%.
All right. 3.5% in '13, up to 7 in '14. If we go... If the council goes that way, could we do that for ourselves? Spread it out over two years?
Well...
3.5% and 3.5%.
There are provisions in the state code which talk about making adjustments in compensation prior to elections. Historically, the council has made changes to compensation in July or February which would occur following the next election. City attorney might want to comment on this, but we would probably recommend that we be consistent with the approach we've taken in the past and that an adjustment be made at one time.
I see. Okay. Because it has to be done after the upcoming election. So in other words, we do the full 7% in one year. I got it. Okay. Second question, I don't know if you may have figured this yet or not, but if, again, if the council goes this way and agrees to pay their own 7% contribution versus the city, what's that going to save the city per year in dollars?
I have all kinds of calculations. Interestingly, that's not one I've done, but in general, our finance...
Save the taxpayer, I should say.
Upsetting. Do you have that number? It would be about 7% of $21,000, so...
Times 5.
Correct.
All right. So it's roughly $1,400. Times 5, what's that about?
$7,350.
$7,350 a year.
Yeah, $7,350.
That's what I wanted to know. All right. Thank you.
Any other questions? Ms. Bill Delapena.
Yes, if you could please elaborate the recommendation to adopt a resolution to approve a tax-defer member-paid contribution and the difference.
Sure. You know, really throughout the state, it's very common for agencies to adopt this. This is a... There's an Internal Revenue Code section which allows contributions toward retirement to be made on a pre-tax basis. We wouldn't have to do this, but what it really does is just hurt all of you individually. It's a provision in the federal Internal Revenue Code which allows those contributions to be made pre-tax. So in effect, it reduces your taxable income by the amount of that contribution.
Did you say the word "hurt"? Hurt? I'm not sure if I understood that. It would hurt? No.
No, I'm...
No.
I'm sorry.
When you said it would hurt all of you, but I'm not sure whether that was the correct word.
Financially.
Oh.
Financially, it would hurt you in the context of you'd be paying more taxes than you really would be required to. There's a provision in the Revenue Code which allows you to make those contributions pre-tax. It would ultimately save you some money.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you.
Okay. We have two speaker cards. Nick Kidway, followed by Clint. I'm not going to do it. Or McMurray. Either one.
Got to have some overheads. Nick Kidway, resident of Newbury Park, very disappointed that there is no participation by the taxpayers who are getting shafted once again. The excuse used for the retirement is that it's the law. Well, you are lawmakers, and in fact, at least one individual wrote to the Acon that we don't need to be paying lobbyists, and you have access to our lobbyists like Jeff Gorel and State Senator, et cetera. Why don't you get rid of this? I mean, it just doesn't... If it doesn't make common sense, it should not be applied. Part-time people who are here to supposedly serve the community should not be in it for lifetime health benefits, which because of campaign, we were able to change and these retirement benefits. If TOTV can show this overhead, thank you. One council member on election night to her party said, "My work isn't finished. I got to finish the work." Well, what happened? Now she's running for Assembly in the middle of her term. It's legal? Is it right? I don't think so. I'm not a Christian, but I am fascinated by the Christian belief in miracles. And this chamber and this city is blessed with miracles. If TOTV will show this, you know, we had a Benedict Arnold in the founding of the nation. And in the 80s, my friend Dan Del Campo turned out to be a Benedict Arnold in the local thing. But lo and behold, history repeats itself, and we have a miracle again. Thank you so much, Mr. TOTV. And I am partially responsible because I think I got the gentleman 500 votes or plus because I was gullible. I mean, just like Linda Parks was for Dan Del Campo, because I believe him. And now, you know, every time something comes up, he is the biggest defender of the tyranny of the government, the tyranny of my friend Scott Micknick from my Cal State Fullerton. I mean, defending that position rather than speaking for the residents that he promised that he would do. Please, for God's sake, do not take this raise. Get rid of the retirement. Make us proud of the council before this hair completely falls and becomes white. I guess you are... Some will say, "Well, you're doing a good job because nobody's showing up. They must be happy." Okay. Enjoy your retirement.
Thank you, Mr. Kidway. Clint Matkovich, followed by... Oh, that's our last speaker. Good evening.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Fox, members of the council, city staff, former mayor Huss. Ladies and gentlemen, my name is Clint Matkovich, and as always, proud to say I'm a lifetime resident of the city of Thousand Oaks, 32 years. I wanted to come here on behalf of those that live in the community that are perhaps unemployed, people like my father who are senior citizens who are forced to work past retirement age, and just make a single request of the four of you. Not out of animosity, but I'd like all of you to justify, if you do vote in favor of raising your pay, how could you justify that to those in the community that aren't working, who are struggling? Because with all... And I say this with all respect, you do have careers off this council, and that's good. You've earned it. You've gone to school. You've paid your dues, and you deserve what you have. And I don't think that should be taken away from you. But I feel also that you understand where I'm coming from. So how would you, if you could tonight, before you vote, however you're going to vote, how would you justify raising your pay raise while many people in this community are struggling? Thank you.
Thank you, sir. That concludes our public comment cards. Any further questions for staff or discussion for the council? Ms. Bill Delapena.
I move that we adopt recommendation number three, resolution to approve tax-defer member-paid contributions at the 7% for this year and no salary increase.
Discussion on the motion? Mr. Adams.
In the question of the pre-tax contributions, that's pretty standard in the private sector. When you contribute to your 401K, it's pre-tax, so... And as far as having the council members contribute to their pension plans, to me, it's eminently fair. We can't very well ask our non-elected staff to make their 7% contribution and not ask ourselves to do the same thing.
Okay. Any further discussion on the motion?
The motion carries 4-0 with councilmember Price absent.
All right. That is approved. We'll move to item 9C. Item 9C is Herb's Road widening project, and that's Mr. Finley.
If I could just clarify, the vote was basically to contribute the 7% for PERS, not take the salary increase. So I think both of the resolutions need to be adopted, and that's what the motion was for. Is that correct? Actually, what we still need to do... Actually, I don't think we need to change the ordinance. Okay, so we're fine. Thanks. Yep, just a shoe. Okay.
Mr. Finley.
Good evening, Mayor Fox, councilmembers. With me this evening is Tom Pisa. He's our Engineering Division Manager in charge of construction. Tonight, we'd like to give you an update on the Herb's Road improvement project. That project goes from Herb's Road, from Thousand Oaks Boulevard, up to Fall Mall Street. It's about 3,900 feet. The objectives for the project, as you recall, were to address transportation and safety concerns on Herb's Road. The components were to widen Herb's Road in the Hillcrest Drive intersection, to provide sidewalks for pedestrian safety, to provide bicycle lanes for bike safety, and to provide an equestrian crossing of Herb's Road. Additionally, we were going to underground the utilities and provide landscape improvements along that corridor. The typical finished cross-section of that section of roadway is going to be a single lane in each direction, a middle turn lane with a bike lane and a sidewalk on each side. And with the exception of north of Hillcrest, where the road narrows, there's on the west... On the east side of the street, there's going to be retaining walls. I just want to bring your attention to this cross-section which shows the dash line there on the right side. You can see that's grading that's going to be required as part of this project, and there's a picture later in the slide presentation that will show you that. We've been busy over the last year. This project was awarded back in April of last year. We've been focusing our attention on the improvements on the west side of the street. Most of the sidewalk is now installed. The gabion retaining walls to support the new sidewalk have been installed to protect the drainage area. There's another shot of those gabions. There's been lots of coordination with residents that live along Herb's Road. When we put in the sidewalk, we had to remove people's driveway entrances onto Herb's, so there's been lots of coordination, replacing their driveway approaches and connecting to their driveways. Lots of time and energy has gone into making sure we minimize the impacts during construction to those residents and give them a nice finished product at the end. Been working on drainage improvements on the west side and installing underground conduit in preparation for undergrounding the overhead utilities. We've had some project challenges along the way. Herb's Road actually predates the city's incorporation, and in fact, the Thousand Oaks tract in the Rancho El Cano was actually recorded in May of 1923, which Herb's Road is listed on that track map. What that means is the existing utilities along that corridor are not well-defined. Most of those, again, were installed before the city was incorporated. The record drawings are scarce. They're not real accurate and difficult to find things. Additionally, the utilities in that corridor have been in the ground for over 50 years, so they're worn out. And I'll show you an example in a minute. And also, there are lots of, as I mentioned earlier, right-of-way impacts to the residents because those homeowners have been there for a long time, and the road has been the same for an awful long time. So one of the things that we have identified throughout the project limits during our construction is that the water services, we had intended to extend those water services to the new right-of-way limits. What we found when we exposed those services, and I'd like Tom Pisa to stand up and show you, this is what the current water services look like on Herb's Road. They're difficult to see, but hold that up, Tom. This is what they should look like. So this gives you some reference. They are rusted. They are hardly... There's hardly any way water's still flowing through them at this point in time. So what we found when we touched them, when we exposed them, that of course, immediately they started leaking. So we knew at that point in time, once you expose them, you dig them up, they're all going to start leaking. So we have a... To date, we've replaced up to about 20 of those services with brand-new services. Of course, that's caused delays in construction that was not in the original scope. It's... We've been working feverishly to try to get that work done and keep the project on schedule or at least moving forward. So it's been a challenge. Water services has definitely been a challenge. As I mentioned, there's lots of utilities that we either don't know existed or aren't where they're supposed to be. This photo shows the new conduits being installed, and as you can see, they're going over one utility and right down the trench, they're going under another. So we're constantly moving ahead of our trench lines and trying to identify where utilities are, and that is all happening during construction. Again, we're not closing Herb's Road. We've closed the lane, so we're working along, trying to... we're not closing Herbs Road. We've closed the lane, so we're working along, trying to-- expeditiously, to trying to locate all the utilities. As I mentioned, the existing infrastructure is old. Even these conduits, as I saw here, you expose them, and you realize how rusty they are. Next thing you know, you're replacing them, because you can't pull the wires out, and you can't get new wires back in. Sewer laterals, which aren't where you expect them to be. This one happens to be running parallel to Herbs Road and was actually struck when we were extending a water service into the hillside. So all of these sewer laterals for all these homes will have to be relocated deeper, because again, the road is being widened, and where they come down the embankment today is at a different elevation than they're going to have to be in the future finished design. This is a picture showing a water meter box. It's been relocated. It's a new service. It is now 20 feet back of the curb line. So you can see, I'm actually-- this picture's taken from standing on the street. That's how far back into the embankment that water service is going. Behind that is another five-foot of sidewalk and another 10 to 12-foot of retaining walls. So you can see the impacts that we are making on-- it's actually, we have construction easements for all of this. Ultimately, the finished product, the retaining wall will be eight to 10 feet behind that meter box. But here's another shot to show you the profile. That red arrow is pointing to that cone. That's about where that meter box is. So when we talk about how much material is going to have to be removed to get the roadway in, that's the magnitude we're talking. Now, the house in this particular case is back quite a bit further. Again, we have easements. We have right-of-way. But there's definitely a lot of coordination that's needing to occur out there. Here's another location. I wanted to point this out. Again, the back of-- the new back of curb is probably going to be 20 feet into the embankment from the existing curb. This telephone pole will actually have to stay in place throughout construction during all the grading and the construction of the walls and the installation of the utility lines. It'll be actually the last thing to remove, because the houses-- the new wire has to be pulled in, the new conduit. The houses need to be transferred from the pole to the new underground services, and then they can actually remove these poles and finish the paving. So lots of coordination effort through this section of the project. So just quick kind of overview, the project is about 45% complete. There's been eight change orders approved to date, about $345,000, which is within the current approved construction contingency. The construction support services has required significantly more effort than anticipated with the coordination and the utility issues. That is what has resulted in Amendment Number One, which is before you this evening. There's, again, extensive utility conflicts, the coordination with the residents, also the redesign of the retaining wall due to these utility conflicts. We've actually had to change the design to a pile-type design. And additionally, we've also gone ahead and done the design for the track 5106 Street Improvements, which is just north of Fall Mall. That property is on the verge of developing, and we thought it would be best to go ahead and put those ultimate improvements in, so that when we leave, they'll be done, and we will have the developer reimburse us for that work. Budget summary. The design environmental portion of the project, including right-of-way, is about $1.5 million. Construction support services, including Amendment Number One, about $1.5 million. The construction contract, including contingency, was awarded $6.8 million. The utility undergrounding, the estimate at this point with-- that's all the Edison and Verizon Time Warner is $1.7 million. We've got some money in there for environmental mitigation, and the total project cost is about $11.5 million. Just to give you the funding summary, there's $2 million of gas tax or TDA money that's been allocated to the project. That includes the 751,000 of one-time additional TDA funds that the city received this year, or will receive this year. About $1.3 million in developer funds, 4.8 in federal grant funds, although we anticipate that the project will qualify for additional grant funds and are actively seeking those funds. $3 million in general fund for the total there of $11 million. We are implementing some cost control strategies based on the costs and the complications with the project, the challenges. We are implementing some value engineering, making some changes to the storm drain design and the retaining walls to hopefully save some money. We are utilizing city inspection staff out at the project as much as possible, and we are utilizing city engineering staff for coordination work with the local residents, doing some of that redesign work where feasible. The contract, as I said previously, was awarded in April 2013, and we anticipate completion in December 2014. With that, staff's recommendation night is to approve the First Amendment Professional Services Agreement with Pinfield &amp; Smith for $678,000 and approve the budget appropriation and expenditure of the $600,000 from TDA fund balance. We continue to do public outreach. You can find information about the project on the city's website, www.t-oaks.org/herbs. We have updates on our social media. We continue to have a changeable message sign near the project area, and we are continuing to be in contact with the residents that live close by as work progresses. With that, we're here if you have any questions.
Questions for Mr. Finley? Ms. Bill O'Penny?
Thank you, Mayor Fox. Good evening, Mr. Finley. The visuals that you provided on the dies over there, including the photos, are very telling, and I'm thinking that when you-- when it comes to infrastructure and replacing water pipes, is $600,000 going to be enough?
This amendment today is for the consultant, the construction management services. In the future, we may need to come back with a change order to council for the construction side. We have-- we estimate the water-- the new water services are going to result in about a $250,000 increase in cost. Right now, that's being covered within the construction contingency. We will come back at a future meeting with kind of an update on the construction side.
Okay, so this will not be the last, but you will come back. Thank you. Just wanted to be aware of that. Thanks.
Any other questions? Mr. Warren?
I just had a comment. Councilmember Price and I sit on the Capitol Facilities Committee, and we spend a lot of time going through these items, and it's unfortunate but unavoidable, the cost overruns. And I think Public Works is doing everything they possibly can to manage the costs and bring down costs in other areas to keep the overrides to a minimum.
I would-- pleasure the council on this. Mr. Adams?
Yeah, I mean, when you uncover infrastructure that's been buried for 50-plus years, some things are just unforeseeable. I appreciate the report. You make my kitchen remodel seem like a child's play. My motion, move 9C.
Sorry, Mr. Adams, did we move? Okay, all right. Any discussion? Vote, please.
I'm sorry, could you vote again, please? Motion carries 4-0 with Councilmember Price absent.
All right, that is approved. Item 10 is committee commission board reports. We have none. Item 11 is the redevelopment. Of course, we have none. Item 12 is council issues or recommendations. 12A, follow-up on reports, none. Item 13, city manager, Mr. Minnick.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, by way of follow-up from comments tonight, just one, we heard during the public comments, some comments about signs along the Boulevard and maybe other business districts, and to remind the city council, your staff has been proactive over the last couple of months, working with the Thousand Oaks Boulevard Association and the Business Improvement District and other businesses, and the Chamber of Commerce to take a stronger stance on non-approved signs or banners and that type of thing out in front of storefronts. So it's a complicated, complex issue. We're trying to strike the delicate balance between adhering to our codes and not being too draconian with our local businesses. The next city council meeting will be on March 4th. We'll have the annual city council goals-setting study session. And then after that, on March 25th, will be a regular council meeting, and I'm looking at the forecast, and at this point in time, one public hearing is anticipated, having to do with the safety element, the general plan, the update. And I think we'll have an update on the Windy 101 project that's taking place. That's it, Mr. Mayor, by way of city manager follow-up.
Thank you, Mr. Minnick. Ms. Noonan, do you want to announce the closed session before adjournment tonight?
Yes, we have one closed session, conference with rural property negotiators. Property approximately 30,000 square feet of city-owned parcel abiding Lynn Road to the south and east of South Ventu Park Road, directly north of APN 6730440140 in the City of Thousand Oaks. City negotiators are Jay Spurgeon, Public Works Director, and Tracy Noonan, City Attorney. Negotiating parties, Ray Faz, buyer, under negotiation price in terms of sale pursuant to Government Code Section 54956.8. It is unlikely I'll have anything to report.
Thank you, Ms. Noonan. Tonight, we are adjourning to tonight's council meeting in honor of two individuals, Albert H. Diracian and former city employee Joan Karp. Albert was a native of Philadelphia. He moved to Westlake Village in 1989. Although Albert was born in America, his ancestry takes us back to Armenia, which was the source of much of his inspiration. He was an accomplished teacher, where he helped others to create beautiful music. He always gave his credit to his ancestral roots and to God, who he believed should always be glorified in his music. After his retirement from teaching, he composed both secular and sacred music that was performed by the Glendale Symphony, the Garden Grove Symphony, the Sierra Philharmonic Symphony, and the Caneo Symphony, and broadcasted on radio stations around the world. Albert had many happy memories in Westlake Village with his friends and family that enriched his life. He will always be remembered through his magnificent music, his faith, and the love that he had for his family. Albert is survived by his dear and loving wife of 58 years, Annabelle Lee. Our second adjournment tonight is in memory of former city employee Joan Karp. Joan passed away on January 12, 2014. Joan was a native of California, having been born in 1940 in the city of Santa Monica. She was employed by the City of Thousand Oaks for 34 years until her retirement in 2003. Joan was a volunteer at the Thousand Oaks Library and was awarded Volunteer of the Year in 2009. As Joan was always ready to help in any way she could, she assisted in helping the Caneo Valley Unified School District first-grade class for library tours. She also served as the treasurer for the Retired City Employees Association after her retirement. Joan is survived by her son and his wife, Charles and Don Karp, her grandchildren, Kristen, Lauren, and Tyler, her great-grandson, Aiden, her sister, Carol Holstein, and niece, Lori Jackson. She will be greatly missed, and she is loved by all who knew her. And that will bring us to our adjournment, to our next regularly scheduled council meeting on March 4, 2014. That will be council's goal-setting meeting, and we are adjourned. Have a great week.